Okay. Let us go back then into public session. Are we now accessible to the public?
Yes.
All right. Members and staff, and especially members of the public, we apologize for the delay, but this is the era, obviously, of adaptive technology, but also sometimes technological snafus, but we fix it. And we're glad to be back with you. Let us deem the pledge of allegiance, the roll call, and all of the other items that precede the actual agenda to be, have already been completed. Vice Mayor Harris has asked that item three be voted on and heard separately, which, of course, without objection, we will do. And now we go back to the public testimony on the consent calendar. There were three speakers, and Ms. Abbott was one of them. I think since the public could not hear her testimony, we ought to have Ms. Abbott on the line again if she called back, and then the other speakers.
And we do have Robert on the line now, and Ms. Abbott is in here.
Okay, that's fine. Let's go ahead. Start the clock again, please.
Robert, we're ready when you are.
Go ahead.
Was that for me, Robert? I'm sorry.
Yes, Robert.
Okay. My name is Robert Habian, calling on behalf of 500 Burka LLC. Just notifying that a complaint was filed today against the city of Sacramento by 500 Burka LLC with five causes of action. The first, commissary topple. Second, due process. Equal protection. The third, state created danger. Fourth, injunctive relief. And fifth, declaratory relief. That's it. Thank you.
Please leave your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Well, hello again. This is Jenna Abbott, and I am the executive director for the River District. Thank you for resolving the audio problems. I certainly do appreciate that. I am calling you today to speak about item number three on your consent calendar, which is the conversion of the Hawthorne Suites. The River District agrees that the housing the homeless is definitely a heated issue in the city of Sacramento. Perhaps no one better than the constituents in the River District understand that. But we feel, and my stakeholders have told me loudly and clearly, that the River District is overburdened with social services and services for the homeless. So we would really like to urge you again to reconsider where you place this service. We would like you to look at other hotels within the city for conversions. And we would just strongly urge you not to, not to move forward with this particular We would like to remind you that back in 1989, a previous council made a promise to the constituents in the River District, and I would ask you to honor that promise. I won't belabor the point, Honorable Housing Commission, but I do really think that this is something that the commission should take seriously. This is pardoning the River District unfairly. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to comment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Abbott. Next?
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg, council members. I'm Greta Lachin. I'm the president of the River District Board. I want you all to know, if you want our cooperation, ask us. What do we need to solve the homeless problem in the River District? Because if you don't work with us, you're doing it to us. And we feel it every time you force another project into the tiny area that is the River District. You know this is grossly unfair, not fair share. Mayor Steinberg, you came into office determined to make the homeless problem better. Vice Mayor Harris, homelessness was in your election platform, yet we are much worse off now than we were then. Mr. Mayor, you asked each of your council member to take just 200 homeless people per district. Councilmembers Guerra and Jennings, I recall you each thought safe car camping would work in your districts. Councilmember Ashby, you promised to find housing for 200 women and their children. These are great goals. Please update us. How are these projects coming along? Mayor Steinberg, you later scaled back to ask council members to take just 100 people per district. That's not enough. All of you have a long way to go to equal our contribution, our sacrifice. We already have nearly 500 beds in the River District. And that's not all. Now we're being told that we're getting a whopping $800,000 for toilets, 12 porta potties. As far as I know, none of those toilets are going anywhere else, just here. Why? Is there no need anywhere else? Are you afraid porta potties will attract campers? Is that not a concern in the River District? Sacramento needs a comprehensive plan if there's any hope of solving homelessness, and it's got to involve fair share. Please stop trying to jam more programs into our tiny River District. We have already done.
Please leave your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comments, please?
We have already done more than our fair share. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Oh, thank you. My name is Kent Lachin. I'm a business owner in the River District since 1981. You know, we were never asked if we wanted public porta potties put all over our area, but you're going to put them in anyway. And we were not asked whether we wanted another huge homeless shelter here, but you're putting one in anyway, 272 beds. I think you were using the River District as a little corner to put the vast majority of homeless services for the whole region. We're a little over one square mile in area, and we have 500 beds already. We were promised fair share. Why aren't you putting more services in other districts? The riverbanks that surround the River District are already crowded with hundreds of homeless camps. When homeless people leave services, often they go down to the river and they live there. It's a perfect petri dish for creating a permanent homeless ghetto. This revolving door isn't good for the homeless, and it's killing the River District. Sacramento theatrical lighting is relocating. Other businesses I know for a fact are looking for new locations. Pipe Works has been victimized by homeless fires and vandalism. One day, I fear they'll be looking too. Last Sunday afternoon, I found an old guy lying unconscious in my parking lot. He had a tube coming out his pant leg attached to a catheter bag. His eyes were open, but he didn't appear to be breathing. I thought he might be dead. I shook him a little bit, and he came to life. I got him some waters and tried to talk to him. If I hadn't seen him, I do believe he would have died there in my parking lot from dehydration. I don't want to be a first responder like this. The violence, the degradation, the garbage, the drugs, the more homeless you give us, the worse it gets. And you are wrong if you think you can keep the homeless confined to our area. They will be continuing to spill down to downtown and the new rail yards development. Please stop concentrating down here. The cure is killing the patient. Thank you for listening.
Please leave your comments. Just one more.
Okay. Thank you very much. Why don't we take a motion and a second on items one and two together?
Both moved.
Okay. Is there a second on one and two?
Second.
I don't know who that came from, but I heard a second.
Motion is by Councilmember Sheneer and second by Councilmember Carr.
Okay. Let us call the roll on items one and two, please.
Your first one, Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Steer?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mr. Steinberg.
Aye. All right. Those two items passed. Vice Mayor Harris on item three.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we've heard some testimony from some of my constituents in the River District. They do point out the resolution from 1989 in which the council took a formal action via a resolution to not add any more homeless services in the River District, and yet since that time, various iterations of the council have. You know, I am a believer in housing the homeless, and this puts me in a bit of a quandary because sometimes, as Steve Hanson would say, we act as advocates and sometimes as trustees. In this situation, virtually every constituent that I have in the River District is equally incensed by the idea of us converting Hawthorne Suites into triage, moving into permanent supportive housing, even though there is a workforce housing component to the project. You know, I think it's a good project, quite honestly. It could conceivably work if it's run impeccably, but there are the concerns that it won't be. And, you know, those are real concerns. It's hard to run a facility like this with absolutely no impacts on the surrounding community. My concern at this point is that I've worked for the last six years to try to bring solid investment to the River District. We're finally poised to get vertical construction at Township Nine after nine years of languishing. That's 1,000 units of Opportunity Zone, and a lot of it's workforce housing. It's a big deal, and yet that developer has the jitters about the Hawthorne Suites. Additionally, Steve Harris is claiming to have a project for a high-rise at the former Rusty Duck site and feels that this Hawthorne Suites conversion would be very deleterious to his ability to attract equity partners for an expensive project with this kind of facility right across the street. You know, I believe that the council will pass this because we've already come this far with the project. And frankly, the timing isn't great, but that's when the state money became available, and kudos to SHRA for chasing it down and getting the grant. They do a very admirable job with that. But at this juncture, I have to agree. If you look at where all the homeless services and shelters are in the city, they are all in the River District. Well, not all. I mean, they're St. John's, but if you look at the map, there's blue dots in abundance in the River District and a couple of outliers. It's a tough vote for me, but honestly, I'm going to have to vote against this once again. It is hard to do so, but on balance, I am actually worried about continued investment in the River District with more concentration there. There is no doubt in my mind that the homeless population is there because of the social services that are available and the adjacent of the river, which is something that homeless campers tend to favor. But, you know, on balance, you've heard the ire of the River District Board. I've sat with these people for the last six years and listened to their concerns for a long time. So my vote on this will be no. One last point I want to make is that the Lachins were inaccurate about this idea that we were spending $800,000 to place porta potties in the River District. That is not at all the project that's on the table. In fact, it's not fully developed yet, and it won't be visited upon them if they don't want it. This is pit stop. It's portable attended bathrooms, and they can do an awful lot of good for the River District. I clearly have a little work ahead of me to settle the facts down with the River District Board and find out if we can get by. And if they don't want it, that's fine, because it can be used and will be used all over the city. There's a great need for pit stop-type facilities all around the city. I'm sure that councilmembers Warren and Jay Sheneer would benefit dramatically by having the use of these portable attended bathrooms. You know, the reason that they're portable is so that they don't become an attractive nuisance. Anyway, I just wanted to set that straight, Mayor. You know, again, it's really going to be incumbent upon us to run this program impeccably and do no harm to the River District. I think that can happen, but it could, quite conceivably, cause investment partners to look upon the River District less favorably, and that is definitely a deep concern for me, so I'm going to have to vote no. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm too very concerned about how we're tackling or attempting to tackle, you know, this ever-present homeless issue. I think sometimes we get so excited to make a little bit of progress and we miss kind of the missteps that we make. You know, businesses, in case people have not paid attention, businesses are, they are failing and they are bailing, starting to bail on Sacramento. Vice Mayor Harris just mentioned that there are a couple of significant projects in the River District of which now become more challenging to, to affect as a result of some of the decisions that this council is making. And, you know, I think that's a real problem because jobs are needed in order to generate revenue and taxes and gain employment for people, and so we have to be mindful, you know, of the, of the other impacts that the decisions are making. And the thing that also concerns me about this is that, you know, seemingly no outreach to the community, to the business owners. I mean, these guys, these business owners who have invested, you know, millions and millions of dollars have told me that they, no one has reached out to them. And so they hear about this, and they become outraged, and then they panic because they've invested a lot of money. And I think there was somebody just mentioned that there was a lawsuit filed. In fact, I was notified last week that one of the adjacent property owners, his group, is going to file a lawsuit against the city. And I'm not sure if that's what the gentleman who mentioned the lawsuit earlier was or not, but I just think we go about it the wrong way. We get so excited to make, you know, this minimal progress. And, I mean, we, you know, we have good intentions, great intentions, but I'm not, I don't think we are really adequately considering the impacts or making necessarily the best decisions. And so I'm not going to support this either, Vice Mayor. I think that, you know, we have to be more inclusive in how we, particularly the sensitive issues and impacts. And I know you mentioned that the River District, which most, if not all, of these social services, but just let me remind you that District Two has had its fair share railroad. Even though it's in District One, it's closely associated with District Two. We have the COVID Hotel now over in the Woodlake neighborhood, which has been very problematic. And you also have the Tiny Home Project that we approved, and we now have emancipated youth in District Two, as well as some others that are not as noted. And so District Two has done its fair share. And so, you know, I want to support our council and the redevelopment agency and the good work they're doing, but I just think the decision that we're making now will have much wider implications, and I think some of them are going to be hard to backfill, much harder to backfill. And just keep in mind, we're going to need tax revenues to really keep the city functioning, and that comes by way of not grants from either federal or state. It comes by way of business creation, job creation, and working people in our city, and that has to be respected. So, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Carr? And I'm going to go next.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, I know this is a difficult decision for you because you have been pushing for shelters ever since I've been on the council, and you certainly know your district better than I do. I've been here since '86. I know District Eight really well, and I know you know the people, the businesses, and what goes in your district really well. So the fact that you're not supporting this weighs heavily for me. You know, the, the location, in my estimation, is not a bad location, even given the Boise decision and the COVID-19 restrictions that have been placed on us by the county health officer. There are not a lot of public lands around there that we could move people off of, unlike the Metta View site, where we put, put a shelter in next to all sorts of public property that we are not able to move people off. So I'm not so concerned from that part of it. The part that gives me the most concern is that the council made a promise, passed an ordinance, and voted on it. And of course, we can change that at any time, and apparently we're going to change it today. But that's a promise the city made to the people of the district, that they would not continue to overload the River District with homeless services. And that weighs really heavily for me, too. There is another hotel that's being considered on the corner of Mac and Highway 99 that I fully support for two reasons. One, it's not near public lands. We can control the property. Two, it has facilities that we can turn into permanent supportive housing, which is the real answer to our problem. Seems to me every dollar that we put in these shelters is a dollar we're taking away from the real solution, and that is permanent supportive housing for people. Because after you get them out of the shelters, you have to put them somewhere. And so I'm supporting that one on, at the hotel on Mac Road, but I cannot support this one. I can't pretend to know your district better than you do. You work there. You live there. You interface with the people there on a daily basis. And if you say this is not a good spot for a shelter, then I have to honor your decision and also have to honor my promise that I would not vote to force a homeless facility or a cannabis facility or any other facility in a district that the council member did not support, and I will honor my pledge. Thank you, Mayor.
So I think that's an opportune time for me to weigh in on this with a couple of comments. First of all, with the tools I have, the limited tools I have as your mayor, I will continue to fight for a fair share policy and fair share implementation throughout the city. And I will, in fact, stipulate that each of you, as elected representatives of your districts, know your districts better than any of your other colleagues and even better than me as the citywide elected mayor. But think through the logical conclusion of Councilmember Carr's policy position here, which is that if any member says, "No, I do not want this in my district," therefore it shall not happen. That is a recipe for throwing up our hands and saying, "We have no will. We have no real desire to try to make this problem better." Because, you know, Jeff Harris and I have our, our issues, but, you know, in this instance, he is an individual who has fought to locate projects within his district over the objection of, of other constituents, and I recognize that and acknowledge that. But the truth of the matter is, citywide, we go through some form of this discussion and debate for every single project that comes before us. And here's the truth that never gets talked about. For those, and I understand the frustration of the River District, but for anyone who opposes any effort to bring in hundreds of people, would you rather have those same people remain out on the sidewalk in tents? Because that, in fact, is your alternative. And I wish it were the case, council members, that by building one project in one willing district, and there are willing council members, in one council district, that it would provide the kind of citywide relief that people are asking for. That's not the case. We need multiple sites and multiple strategies. And so damned if you do and damned if you don't. If I have to err on one side, I will err on aggressively doing everything we can to say it's no longer acceptable for people to live out on the goddamn sidewalk and to come indoors under a roof in any form, in any way. Because I think that is a better state of being and better for our city than what we are living with now. And our city has a big problem here. And by the way, it is not the lack of money, because we've got plenty of money now. We really do. And you can thank your mayor, and you can thank Governor Newsom, and you can thank even the federal government through the CARES Act for bringing in more money than we have ever had here before. But we got a very different problem. It takes too darn long to cite. It takes too long to implement. It takes too long to get a program up and running while Rome burns. And so I'm sorry to the River District. I get Jeff Harris's dilemma here. He's got a track record here, which I think gives him, if you will, a better excuse than maybe in another circumstance. But from a citywide perspective, I'm sorry. We have to go forward because we have to bring more people indoors. That's the way I feel about this, and I'm the only one elected for the entire city, not just your individual districts. Who's next?
Mr. Mayor, can I, you called me out, so I need to respond.
You're welcome to, of course. Just a debate.
I think that everybody on the city council, all my fellow council members and you feel the exact same way. We have a huge problem. We got to get people off the street. And we understand the gravity of the issue. Other people on the council, Jeff Harris and Alan Warren, have been the most vocal on how we can solve this problem and the most willing to accept services in their area. There is such a thing in real estate that they call location, location, location. Not all, not all programs can be housed in all areas. Some are not suitable for what is being proposed. Your first proposal, that each of us identify a two-acre site with a concrete pad so we could put up a sprung shelter, was unworkable. There, this is a built-up city. There are not that many places to have that kind of, that will accept that type of structure. It just doesn't work. So we have to develop additional alternatives rather than sticking with that one plan. Hotel conversion is a good program. I like it. I like it for Metta View. I'm willing to accept it because it's in a good location and we can control the environment and we can make sure that it doesn't unnecessarily burden the people who live in the area. Jeff is saying that this situation doesn't fit. I'm sure he's willing to accept alternative locations now that we have money to do such things. Before, we didn't have the money to do it. We didn't have the money to put people in the housing. We didn't have money to create temporary shelters. And to your credit, you went out and found the money. You went out and found the money to do these things. Now it's up to us to find the right locations to put them, to get the safe parking ban, to get shelters built in other hotels, to get shelters put, let people even convert garages now that we have the resources to do that. But I don't think permanently putting them into a location that's not as suitable for that particular use is a good idea.
You know, Councilman Carr, fair enough. But what I don't want and that, and what I regrettably expect is that if I put it out again to everyone on location, and not just the members, but the city staff as well, and said, "Come back with locations that will allow us to achieve the, the fair share policy," that we would be engaging in another report back six months from now, 12 months from now. Nobody's fault, nobody's individual, nobody's not trying, just the way that it works. And the people are obviously demanding something different. They want to solve the problem, but they don't want it, or at least more than their fair share of it, in their backyard. I'll move on. Councilman Hanson?
Hi, Mayor.
And we don't have a motion yet. So what I'd like to do is make a motion to approve the item with a little bit of direction, maybe to you and the staff. I think the project, you know, we debated it for, I think, a couple hours last time it was before us. It was a very lengthy debate and I don't really intend to rehash that. But it seems like it's been mischaracterized again as a homeless shelter. This is permanent supportive housing as well as a workforce housing component. While there may be some triage in the meantime, I think we should give you, Mayor, the ability to work with Councilmember Harris, S H R A and the other staff on that piece of it. If this project gets funded and there is an alternative site for the triage piece, that goes forward. I am very proud of having stepped forward to take a shelter, Capital Park Hotel. I know that some of the people on this council may not think that that was a good use of money, but we got a lot of people off the streets and into housing and we used a building that was otherwise going to be shut down to be converted. And we can have those debates. But I don't think unless and until we see shelters operating across the city, the ones in my district, and I have two of the three project room key sites in my district because other people haven't necessarily been willing to take those. I even think the District 2 property was scheduled to shut down next week at the end of this month because of the concerns of the neighborhood. So I will be left with the only project room key sites in District 4. That being said, I think we have no choice but to continue to try to forge a social compact where we continue to make sure everybody has a role in this. Every part of the city has a role in it. And I think what Councilmember Warren said and Vice Mayor Harris, those are really important points. There are certain districts that have a disproportionate amount of services, mine being one of them. But I think we can't backslide on our commitment to solving this issue. It's what our constituents demand and we're left with very few options other than providing housing. It's expensive, it's hard, but it's important work. And one of the idols in my life was Dorothy Day. Dorothy Day was a woman who started the Catholic worker movement, opened soup kitchens in the 1930s. And, you know, I look up to her as a person because when I was a kid and we had had hard times, we would go to the Dorothy Day Center in St. Paul for a meal with my mom. So the fear of what permanent supportive housing will do to the River District, I think, is greatly exaggerated. In fact, I think the opposite. We have seen tremendous investment into downtown around the Hotel Berry and it's a project very similar. We've seen tremendous investment continued around the rail yards with the 7th and H Affordable Permanent Supportive Housing Project by Mercy, which is not far from my house. So to the extent that this is fear mongering and really trades on the worst stereotypes, I want to reject that. And I'll finish with what Dorothy Day said, was her favorite quote from the Brothers Karamazov, which is when this rich woman goes and asks a monk what love is, he says, "It's not what you think it is. It's not the romantic kind of love that's eager to prove itself if the task is over quickly. It's that love in action is a harsh and dreadful thing compared to love in dreams because it requires labor and fortitude. And sometimes the harder you work, the further you think you are from that goal. But those are the moments you're the closest." And I would say that solving homelessness requires a lot of active love, labor and fortitude and that in the end, we cannot give up that task because these are the moments where we are, in fact, closest to important and real solutions.
Second. All right, there is a motion and a second. Vice Mayor, is there anything else you want to say given it's your district?
Yeah, Mayor, the first thing I'd like to do is clear out a misconception and that is you and I don't have any issues.
Right, you're right.
And the second is, you know, as I said earlier, this is a tough vote for me because you know, I think you know better than anybody on the council, how desperately I want to get people indoors. And I've always believed that it's better to have them indoors than on the streets. But again, I come back to the fact that the River District has had a promise broken, has 500 beds in a very small area. And that, you know, that's only one part of my district. As you know, I tried to get Motel 6 in Platte. Tried to get the Roya Motel in Platte. Tried to do Women and Children's Shelter on North Gate and keep getting stymied at each of those turns to try to do those things to take some of the burden off of the River District. You know, as I said, this is one time I'm going to choose to be an advocate rather than a trustee. It is a tough vote, but I really do believe that the River District is just simply under siege from the homeless. And, you know, with 1,000 people sleeping outdoors in the River District every night, you know, getting 150 off the streets is a great thing, but it's not going to solve their problem. It's not going to give them any visual relief or relief for the businesses. But the nail in the coffin for me is that it would deter development money. And this is straight from the mouth of the people who want to invest in the River District. That makes me sit up and pay attention. So, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Jennings, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to acknowledge Councilmember Harris. I listened to his testimony about the concerns of this. I heard where he was compromised in what he felt would hurt business coming into his district versus what would also help take 150 or so off the street. It's a tough position to be in. And I've watched him since we've been on the council together since 2014, work like crazy to do incredible things for his entire district, but especially in the area of the River District. And I heard the conversation as far as clarifying the pit stop. Councilmember Harris, you're the only one that I knew that came up with an idea of bringing something like that to your area that could help solve some very important problems. And so I just want to let you know while I support this effort that's in front of us today, that doesn't mean I'm going against you. That means what I'm doing is trying to help you through a difficult situation because I believe taking 150 people off the street is something that's very important. Important. Building permanent and supporting houses is something that's very important. And as I drive through your district every single day, it seems like the number of people who are on the streets and in tents and trash everywhere seems to be growing every single day. And so I want to become a partner with you, an advocate with you, someone that is a teammate with you and helping you to resolve some of the issues that are affecting your district, councilmembers, Warren's district, Councilmember Garrett's district and other councilmembers who have same kind of issues. I think we as a body, as a council, can work together to try to resolve some of those issues as opposed to it being all on the council member. So I just want to kind of raise my hand to you and say you've done a great job. And I've appreciated you since the time that we started together as junior councilmen in 2014 and I've watched the work you've done. And I think you have done an incredible job. And what I'm hopeful for is the fear mongering will not allow us to not have the impact that we need to have on this important issue of homelessness. So that's what I want to say to you, sir.
Rick, thank you for that. I would like just a promise from the council, since this will likely pass. I want a commitment from my colleagues that we will do whatever it takes to run this shelter appropriately and do no harm to the River District. And that may require more resources. It may require force of will. It may require council action. But, you know, if this is going to pass, let's make it the way it should be. Let's make it a showpiece. Let's show the rest of the city that we can do this and do no harm to the immediate surrounds.
And I totally agree with you. If I can say, I heard you say the term to run it impeccably. That was your term. That it must be run impeccably in order for it to have the impact that we know it can have. And my commitment to you is I will make sure I do everything I can to help you to make that happen.
Well, thank you, Rick. I appreciate your words.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
Not that it could be said any better than that, Rick, because that was just exactly how I'm feeling too. But I hope people can hear in Jeff's voice how conflicted he is. There really isn't anybody who's tried harder on this. I remember, gosh, Jeff, how long was that ago when you took me out to see the pit stop when it was brand new? I mean, he was so proud and he's tried so hard. This is really a big challenge. I don't think it's the same type of vote as the Meadowview Shelter. It's workforce housing, as Councilmember Hanson has said. But Jeff, I just wanted to chime in and say, yeah, I have 100% of my support with whatever you need as we move forward. And I love the way that you are advocating for your district, but at the same time acknowledging that if this is going to go forward, we need to make it the best possible solution that we can. So, you know, I'm right there with you too and Rick and with Steve and I think we all are. And I just want to add my voice to the chorus of people. I watched you try so hard for things on North Gate two different times and once in East Sack and just, you know, it's not easy to move any one of these forward anywhere. So, you know, I think we owe it to him to stand with him and make sure that we give LaShelle every resource she needs to be successful with the project. So I love your attitude, Jeff.
Thank you, Angela.
Very good, okay. We do have a motion and a second. And it does include the admonition that Vice Mayor Harris expressed earlier about putting whatever is necessary resource-wise, mitigation-wise to ensure that this is a model for how to do it right, just as our other new projects must be models as well. Let us call the roll on the item, please.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
No.
Vice Mayor Harris?
No.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Yes.
Councilmember Begetta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Carr?
Upstain.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. The motion passes, thank you. Let us now move on to the other items on today's agenda. Let us go with item number four, please. Ms. Dozier?
Yes. We have Christine Weichert, who is going to give the presentation on Northlake Senior Apartments.
Thank you, LaShelle. This report requests approval of issuance of mortgage revenue bonds for the Northlake Senior Apartments. The project is a new affordable housing development located on seven vacant acres in the Greenbrier Master Development between Elkhorn Boulevard, Highway 99 and I-5. The development by St. Anton Communities will have 191 one- and two-bedroom units, which includes two managers' units, to meet the mixed-income housing obligation for the single-family homes the developer proposed to build Northlake and the units we regulated at 50% and 60% of area median income. Residential services will be provided by Pacific Housing. The property management company will be St. Anton. And in closing, staff recommend the approval of this bond issuance and we can answer any questions you may have.
Mindy, do we have any speakers?
I have no callers in the queue on this item.
Okay, then with the mayor's permission, I will just move staff's recommendation here and I don't know if we need to close the public hearing and all that. But this is a really great project. This is, it's called Northlake now, used to be called Greenbrier. This is the affordable housing component to that. Much needed, much anticipated, exciting project. Want to thank S H R A and their team for working with the development team to put together a really nice product here that I think will serve a lot of folks. In the city of Sacramento, there's some workforce housing in there, some senior housing. It's all to the good and in a strong effort for what we're all trying to pursue across the city and in each of our districts. Thank you to S H R A and I'd like to move the item there.
Mayor Protem, will you open and close the public hearing, please?
I did do that, but I can do it again if you'd like me to.
Yes, please.
I will open it again and close it again and move the item. Thank you.
Thank you. And I had a second from Councilmember Carr.
Is it fully closed?
It's completely closed.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
So Christine, can you tell me, how close is this affordable component to the proposed green line to the airport that goes through Greenbrier? Is it adjacent or how far away? Maybe?
You know?
It's adjacent.
Okay, great. That's a nice clarification. Thank you for that.
There's, the project has three high-density components, three apartment complexes planned and all three are adjacent to the future light rail line to the airport.
Perfect, good work.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's now, let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Begetta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings? Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Councilmember Warren, you might mute your phone, please.
I muted him.
Okay. All right, that measure passes. I believe that was nine to nothing. I heard through all of it, okay. Let's go to item five, a project a long time incoming here. Dozier?
Yes, in fact, this is one that we have been waiting on for a very, very long time. This is Lavender Courtyard by Mutual Housing. So Christine?
Yes, good afternoon again. Christine Weichert with Development Finance. In March of 2016, the council approved issuing mortgage revenue bonds and gap financing for Lavender Courtyard by Mutual Housing. Those commitments were reauthorized in December of 2019. This is our final approval for those bonds and a home loan of a little over $1.9 million. The project is a new affordable senior housing development friendly to LGBTQ community. The development is located at the corners of 16th and F Streets and will have a total of 53 residential units consisting of one- and two-bedroom units for seniors. The units will be regulated at 20% to 40% of area median income. And project-based vouchers awarded by S H R A will also assure that 20 of the units are reserved for homeless residents. Mutual Housing will manage the property and provide residence services. And with that, is requesting approval and we can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, are there questions? Councilmember Steve Hanson?
Thanks, Mayor. I got in the spirit today wearing my pride shirt because I'm so proud of our S H R A staff, Mutual Housing and everyone who's worked together to bring this to reality. There was a lot of times where this project looked like it was going to fail. At the beginning, we had residents saying, you know, "Don't put this in our neighborhood", protesting at our movie nights, no Section 8. But we stuck it through and I'm very excited to see this final moment come. I'd also like to just give a shout out as well to our community development staff. I got emailed yesterday that after they redoubled their efforts, the building permit was issued or is ready to issue as of yesterday. So we are going into construction next month on much-needed affordable housing, permanent supportive housing for those 20 formerly homeless folks and filling in a blighted site in the 16th Street Quarter, which has become very hot since this project was proposed. I know everyone thinks that affordable housing is a deterrent, but what we've seen is that it brings new light to areas that were previously neglected. Since this project was proposed, we've seen four other new developments proposed in this very corridor to take advantage of what was left behind place and to bring much-needed new housing. So I'm enthusiastic in making the motion. And just finally, Mayor, you and Councilmember Ashby in particular are very helpful on this project and its journey through this Herculean effort. Christine, you deserve a special amount of praise as well for all of the leadership you've shown on so many of these projects. I know LaShelle gets the limelight often, but almost all of these affordable housing projects pass through Christine's great leadership and she helps put together the capital, working with the staff and the developers and the community to see how we can get them into construction and provide real needed housing to people. So Christine, Mayor Protem Ashby, thanks for your great leadership on this one.
So I just want to say, Steve, I am so happy. that this project is getting done, at least the, the formal approval of this, while you're still a member of the city council. It, it's really, I think, very special and appropriate because you put your heart into this and, and have reminded us that when it comes to people who often are living in fragile conditions, at risk of homelessness, homeless themselves, that the LGBT community, especially seniors, are especially vulnerable because they're still subject to significant discrimination and, and, and such significant stigma and all that comes with it. And this is going to be just a beautiful place of refuge, of home for 53 plus people who might otherwise not have that community and might otherwise be out on the streets. So really, really happy for the agency. Thank you, LaShelle and Christine, very, very much, but especially for you. Especially for you.
Mayor, if I could?
Yeah.
So I too just, I'm actually surprising myself at how emotional I'm getting about this item right now. But I just, I just know how hard you work. And I was in those meetings where you were so this thing died at least twice. And Steve, Steve and Christine fought, I mean fought, not just each other, but for the project. It was like we were all just, we didn't want it to die. And Steve just, he was relentless with this. And I know that this was like in your top tier priorities of things you wanted to get done while you were on the council. And I am, I'm just personally really proud of you. It is literally like the definition of perseverance on this one and commitment. And it really speaks to what it means to have diversity on this council. I know how I have felt when I fought so hard for a women and children's project or a program or something. And when I can just see it sort of coming together, how that feels to me. And Steve, I just, if ever in your mind you doubt the time that you spent here, I hope this project above all others serves as a constant reminder to you of, of why you, you have been so important and critical as a voice for Sacramento. And I know, I mean, I remember the first day you brought this forward and we talked about it a little bit. And remember all of those older members of the LGBT community that came forward to speak, and some of them were fighting with like sicknesses and ailments, and they just, they didn't have money and they needed places to live. And some of them have been dealing with stigma around being in the LGBT community since like the 90s or earlier, which was a very difficult time. And man, my heart broke right alongside of yours. And so today, what a just huge, amazing accomplishment, a great finish line for you, Councilmember Hanson. Congratulations really deeply from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Mayor and Mayor Protem. Because you were there and Mayor, I apologize for jumping in, but I just thought I would say,
Out of order.
Sometimes we think we have to rob Peter to pay Paul. And we were wrestling with a lot of different affordable housing projects, trying to see which ones we could save. And Angelique, I was on the phone earlier with Cyrus Husefi, Ali's dad, because he was telling me that 1717S, which was also a hard fought project, looks like it's going to close its construction loan on October 15th. And so, you know, sometimes we feel like it'll all collapse and, and go away, but we just keep fighting through. And it's a testament to our indomitable spirit here. So thank you both. It is a very important day, but we have so much else to do. So I'll just, I'll leave it at that and say thank you.
All right. Really wonderful. Let's, well, let's see how the council feels about this with the vote here. We've got a motion and a, a motion and a second. Let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Steinberg, I do have one caller on this item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Will you confirm who made the second?
I did, Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you. We'll take our first caller. First caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Hello caller, you have two minutes to address the council.
Okay, I'm, is, do I just speak now?
Yes.
They're voting, they're proceeding with a vote, so I wasn't.
It's your turn to speak. You've got two minutes.
Okay, hello, I'm calling in. It's Holly Wondersiles from Mutual House in California. I've been trying to watch the meeting online. I only just about a minute ago got sound. I don't know what you've all been saying, but I'm going to assume it's all been good. We are so excited to be moving forward with this project. There's a delay. There's a delay.
Okay, take your time. Just, just say, just say it, and we're hearing you, even if you can't express yourself. Okay.
Yeah. I'm Holly Wondersiles from Mutual House in California. I've had, I've been trying to watch this online and only about 60 seconds ago did I even get any sound. I don't know what all you've been saying, but I'm going to assume it's all been good. This is the coolest project. We're delighted to be partnering with the city. We especially want to express our appreciation for the support of the mayor and Councilmember Hanson. And I don't know if it was part of the report, but will be under construction the first week in October.
Awesome, Holly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Holly. All right, let us call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Ashby?
A very proud yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
I think I'll vote aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagueta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
An enthusiastic yes.
Councilmember Carr?
Congratulations, Steve. Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. I'd say that's unanimous. Congratulations again. Hey. Clapping. That's good. Let's move on to the last item of the Housing Authority Agenda. And that is an update on COVID and, and rental assistance.
Yes. As you recall, the council did task us with putting together a emergency rental assistance program. And so I have Sarah here to talk about that program, the components of it, and all of the other details. So Sarah?
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Sarah O'Daniel with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. And I'm here to present to you information on a homeless prevention program you requested us to develop. As context, on August 18th, the city and SHRA, we presented information to utilize a portion of the CARES Act coronavirus relief funds that was allocated to the city to address homelessness and homeless prevention. As part of that report, 4.7 million was directed to develop a homeless prevention program specifically as an emergency rental assistance initiative. And today I am here before you to share information about the proposed program, receive your input, and request approval of the attached resolution. To provide context, I think we will all remember the spring of this year. The nation was impacted by coronavirus pandemic, which significantly impacted both the nation and the city of Sacramento. While we don't have a lot of local data tied to the impact of COVID to our renters, based on national research conducted in the last month, it is estimated that 40 million or more Americans in the country are out of work. Thirty, 33% of renters cannot pay their rent, and 30 million are at risk of being evicted after the federal moratorium is lifted. Studies also show that Black and Latino renters are most impacted with this pending eviction crisis. There have been many legislative bills that have passed at the local, state, and federal level. At the city level, in March of this year, city council adopted an emergency ordinance to establish a temporary moratorium on evicting residential tenants unable to pay rent due to COVID-19. This ordinance was extended until September 30th, in accordance with the governor's executive order issued on June 30th. City renters have 120 days after the expiration date of the moratorium or until January 28th of 2021 to become whole on their payments. On August 31st of this year, Assembly Bill 3088 was signed, which prohibits residential eviction for renters who miss rental payments between March and August 31st. Renters who are impacted by COVID-19 will have to pay at least 25% of each rental payment that comes due or will come due between September 1st and January 31st of 2021 in order to prevent eviction, in addition to making sure they sign a declaration of loss of income. However, if the renter cannot pay 25% of each rental payment, the landlord can proceed with an eviction starting February 1st of next year. To layer on top of that, on September 4th of this year, the Federal Center for Disease Control and Prevention, or CDC for short, announced the issuance of an order to temporarily halt residential evictions through December 31st, 2020, to prevent the further spread of COVID-19. Tenants must also sign a declaration of income loss in this case. It is important to note that while there is a moratorium on evictions, there is no relief provided to renters to erase past rental payments that will be due in 2021. Earlier in the year, families did receive some relief with the passing of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, or CARES Act for short, which passed on March 27th. Families received a one-time stimulus payment based on income, as well as $600 a week of supplemental federal unemployment assistance. However, all such payments have ended, and many families are scraping by with minimal or no income, with no ability to pay back their rent. We know that if renters cannot pay back their past due rent or keep up with their current rent, there will be an eviction tsunami next year. With the CARES Act, jurisdictions like the county and city received CARES funds, and the city received 89.6 million this April to assist residents impacted by COVID. These funds must be expended by December of this year. City staff held workshops over the summer months to identify priorities for expenditure of these funds. At the same time, the $600 a week supplemental unemployment funds ran out in July. In August, on August 18th, 4.7 million was allocated towards a homeless prevention program specifically looking at an emergency rental assistance initiative to prevent low income renters from becoming homeless. 2.7 million of these funds are City CARES Coronavirus Funds, or CRF. In June of this year, 10.2 million of CARES Emergency Solutions Grant, or ESG for short, were awarded to SHRA on behalf of the city. Since then, since then, a little over a week ago, HUD allocated 3.6 million of CARES Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG funds for homeless prevention. Lot of acronyms here. At this time, SHRA staff is looking at both ESG and CDBG's funding sources to find the best fit for the rental assistance program to assist our families. We will have a total of $4.7 million to operate the program. To launch our program, we studied similar models that set up around the country. We also met with a variety of local stakeholders to receive their input. Within a few short weeks, we had a listening session and individual meetings and got in, input from over 25 agencies to tailor this program within the parameters of federal guidelines. We wanted to make sure that the program we set up is uniform, no matter what funding source is used. It is seamless and quick to process, as a portion of these funds must be spent by December. We heard from you, the council, that it was important to prioritize families with children. We also heard from the community that it is important to target those that are deeply vulnerable and on the cusp of becoming homeless. So with that, we recommend launching the Sacramento Emergency Rental Assistance Program, or SARAH for short. The name is just a coincidence, but it will be easy for me to remember this acronym. As only city funds are used to finance this initiative, this program is only available to renters in the city of Sacramento. As this program is mainly assisting those who lost income due to COVID and subsequently lost their supplemental weekly income, the household must have experienced a reduction in employment income due to COVID-19. And as a threshold, the family cannot have income exceeding 50% of area median income. So for a family of two, the current income cannot exceed $34,550. And for a family of four, it cannot exceed $43,150. Based on the feedback provided from you and the listening sessions with the 25 agencies, of the applications received, we will prioritize families with children and extremely low income families, those with income at or below 30% of area median income. So for a family of two, their income cannot exceed $20,750. Or a family of four cannot have income that exceeds $26,200. The maximum rental subsidy provided with this program is up to $4,000 for each household. We will get verification from the landlord of the funds due, and we will directly pay, pay the landlord. This program will not be available to those living in public housing or families receiving an ongoing rental subsidy, such as the Housing Choice voucher program. Based on review of federal guidelines, this program cannot assist, cannot assist non-citizens unless they are qualified aliens. To apply, no, I think I went too far. How do I go back?
Scroll right there.
There we go. I skipped over the most important slide, actually. To apply, there will be an online process similar to how we do our Housing Choice voucher waitlist process, all online. We will have staff available at two locations in the city to provide assistance to the families if they need it. They can help them complete applications or upload documentation onto the online portal. They will also be there to take calls and to walk them through the process if necessary through the phone. We will open the waitlist for a two-week period from October 9th to the 22nd, and all information will be made available on our website, www.shra.org. We will do an extensive marketing campaign, working with social media, and share information in different languages. We will also partner with grassroots agencies, especially with those located in areas with high COVID incidence and high eviction rates. We are gearing up for a fast-paced end of the year and anticipate using all the city funds by the end of the year by the deadline. And we may or may not have some of the remaining federal funds available in early of next year. This concludes my presentation. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
All right, very exciting and very important part of homelessness to prevent it in the first place. And really appreciate the initiative. Is there public testimony?
Yes, we have two callers on this item.
Okay, let's hear from the public first, please.
Thank you. First caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Kathy Cresswell, and I'm on the board of the Sacramento Housing Alliance. And we're calling today to let you know, we really appreciate the city allocating resources to keep people in their homes. And we appreciate SHRA convening meetings, convening meetings to solicit input and, and recognize the urgency of getting the program up and running. We do offer, though, We do offer, though, the following comments about the proposal and the process. While we appreciate the urgency, SHRA should continue to engage stakeholders as they finalize the program. You know, devil is in the detail, and we need to know much more specific information about the application and priorities and how they'll be actually implemented to know how effective the program will be. And it's not possible with just the information that's provided. We also think that SHRA needs to use, and the city needs to consider, developing funding resources that are flexible. There are definitely limitations to some of the federal resources and how they're operating. And we appreciate that SHRA is trying to look at either CDBG or ESG. But the stakeholders raised a number of issues in the meetings that we can't tell have been addressed. So we're hoping to have the opportunity to continue working with SHRA to know how they considered our comments and if they were rejected, why. We're also hoping that SHRA can do weekly updates or bi-weekly updates once the implementation starts. And it's important to know that it's operating efficiently, how we can address unexpected programs, and how people are being served, at least through the end of the year. After that, less frequent updating. We're also looking for the program to be much more creative about serving undocumented households. While there are clear issues with the use of federal funds, LA, for example, has got a $100 million rental assistance program.
Make your comments. Your time is complete. Make your final comments, please.
I would like to hear this point about the undocumented population, please. So just, why don't we take that as a question, Ms. Cresswell, if you can answer that, how LA has done their program to help undocumented immigrants?
The city staff said that they, working with their city attorney, found a workaround where, because they were giving money directly to the landlords and not to tenants, they were able to consider it an eligible use of the funds. And so we know there've been some other communities who've done that. And so we're hoping that the city can work with council and attorneys to figure out how the city of Sacramento, because that is such a vulnerable population. The other thing I just wanted to quickly say, because I know my time is up, but that. So we're hoping that SHRA will continue to work with us. But that we also really appreciate the council allocating funds, but more money is likely to be needed. Especially if you use more local funds, you've got more flexibility. So we urge the council to be prepared to augment funding at the end of the year to help even more households, because we assume the demand is significantly going to exceed the resources. But we appreciate allocation of funds and your leadership in doing that, and look forward to continuing to work with.
Thank you, Kathy.
So thank you.
Okay. On the undocumented issue that Ms. Cresswell raised, SHRA, Chair LaChelle, I think this is a very compelling point. If we can somehow make eligible people regardless of their immigration status, I think it would be an even more powerful program and powerful message. Can you, and I would love the motion to reflect that intent, subject to the legal analysis and the precedent that apparently Los Angeles is establishing. Any comments from the staff here?
So we did have an opportunity to take a look at that from a legal perspective. However, Ms. Cresswell does raise a very interesting point in terms of how Los Angeles has handled it. So I think that we would be more than willing to kind of investigate and see if that is a viable option for us as well.
So let's, the maker of the motion, are you willing to add that if it is legally permissible to do it in the way Ms. Cresswell suggested that Los Angeles is doing it, that undocumented immigrants under each of the criteria would be fully eligible for this rental assistance?
Well, Mr. Mayor, no one's made a motion, but I'll make a motion to that effect. And once we get to the comment here.
Okay, well.
I have one more caller. Are you ready for them? Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, council members. Mayor Steinberg, Director Dozier. My name is Rick Eden, and I'm speaking this afternoon on behalf of Sacramento Act. Sacramento Act applauds the council and SHRA for bringing forward this very important proposal. We have long advocated for rent relief, and therefore we are very gratified to see this moving forward. We were prepared to say that we're disappointed that the restrictions on funding sources would not permit assistance to undocumented community members. So therefore, we're very gratified to hear that maybe that prohibition is not as ironclad as we had thought. Because we understand, as you do, that this is a very vulnerable portion of our community, and we need to look for very creative ways to assist them. We also want to point out that, as I'm sure you recognize, that $4.7 million will prove insufficient to the need, and therefore really hope and urge that the council will, and SHRA, will look for ways to expand this program and continue it as additional funding is made available. Thank you very much.
I have one more caller. Just a moment.
Okay, thank you very much. I would ask, obviously, the agency to, you know, let's get back to the council, because the public's going to be very interested in this question. And it's back to the council in writing with the confirmation that there is a way to make people eligible regardless of their immigration status.
We'll respond back to the council in writing after we've had a chance to investigate that.
Okay. Very good. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any council comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, yeah. I think we've got a couple of folks punched up here.
I'm sorry.
No worries. Do you mind if I go?
Not at all.
Okay, good. Well, thank you. You know, glad to make the motion here. And also, if Councilmember Hanson with his second includes some direction here about the reporting with the Sacramento Housing Alliance and the advocate stakeholders. I do want to thank Sacramento Act and the Legal Services Northern California that have been working to provide legal advice and direction on this matter. So I think the bi-weekly check-ins are going to be helpful at the start of this program to make sure that it comes off in the most impactful way. If that's okay, Councilmember Hanson?
Fine by me. Thank you.
Thank you. And on the legal point, I want to also thank Matt Ruriak and our city attorney Suzanne Alcala Wood, who are looking at a lot of these questions very early on. Early on, we met with many of the folks from both our Fuel Network, California Rural Eagle Assistance, to look at how we can make sure that all our programs are inclusive and not excluding all of our Sacramentoans. So I think there's some work that's been done here already, and I hope that we can make sure that our housing authority also coordinates on that part. I do think that there is a way to do this. Other cities have, not just on the Housing and Rental Assistance Program, but on other needs and supportive programs. I mean, the fact is, is that, you know, we have a tremendous need right now for folks to, many have lost their jobs, many are doing odd jobs to try to be able to make their rent payment. And this is something that I think is at the bare minimum of the need. Thank you, Councilmember Hanson Carr, for pushing on this item as well. I know we've met with a lot of folks who've been talking about how big the need is. And we're talking about a population, right? I mean, 30% of our average median income, this is the extremely low population. We know folks that are in the higher income, who, even 50%, I wouldn't even call it higher income, but still in the 50% of AMI, who are above that, who are experiencing some significant challenges. So thanks again to LaChelle and Sarah for Sarah. Thank you, Sarah for Sarah, on that. This is a good start for the need, and I think we've got more work to do on this. But I think the report back's going to be important. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there anybody else who is up?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could, just a couple of things. First of all, totally supportive and really appreciate the addition of, for the undocumented folks. And if I can be of any assistance to help you, LaChelle or Sarah, with connecting you to the consulate to address some of those issues, happy to do so as well. I just have one concern about the motion, and it's really just a question for probably SHRA staff and maybe the mayor. And that is, I think the report backs are important too, but we've asked a lot of you here with this one, and I'm worried about the piling on effect with everything else we've already asked for. Is every other week report back going to be something attainable? I don't want us to vote for it, and then it's not something you can do. So if it's, what can you do? If you can do that, great. If you can't, what can you do?
Yes.
So we are, I have to be honest, scrambling and working extremely hard to deliver on all of these projects. I mean, if you saw just the array of everything that was teed up for today, you know, we are firing on all cylinders and really working under an extremely, extremely tight line, timeline to get home key projects across the line as well. So initially, it would be difficult, because there is a period of time where it's just the waitlist is open for two weeks. So I would say after the waitlist closes and we have more data and information, then it would be easier for us to provide those type of updates. But we are struggling, I must be very clear. We are struggling just to get it all done.
I know that the council wants you to focus more on the pieces about inclusion and undocumented folks, but I would just ask the maker of the motion to ease that restriction and ask them to come back as quickly as they can, as prudently as they can, and as often as they can, so that we don't tie their hands and then somehow accidentally not be able to meet that deadline.
But my, the report back is to work with the stakeholders. Is there a challenge, LaChelle, working with the stakeholders on a bi-weekly method?
No, we're not saying that we don't have a problem working with the stakeholders. It was about actually preparing reports and getting reports out on a bi-weekly basis. We did have an opportunity to have a Zoom meeting with 26 different stakeholders, and we walked through all of the criteria. And we'd be happy to have another meeting to really talk about the program, because that's going to be a part of the outreach. But remember, we have to do extensive outreach between now and October 9th, the launch of this project, so that everybody knows about it and has the ability to participate. So I want to put as much effort as possible into that level of outreach to the citizens of Sacramento.
Yeah, and I think that's the intent here. I think what the stakeholders want to make sure is that there's a feedback loop, since they're working directly with a lot of the people who are going to be applying. So as long as you can commit to working with the stakeholders, rather than spending your time doing reports to the council so that they're posted out here. But the important component here is that feedback loop with the people who are working directly with the families affected. Is that something that you can commit to doing, LaChelle?
Yes, we can absolutely work with the stakeholders. That'll be a part of the outreach and all of the work that we're going to be doing. It's just the having to put together reports and integrating that. That was the issue.
And that's the intent of the motion.
Okay. The report requirement is relaxed by the maker of the motion, but the intent is to ensure that there really is the robust outreach with the stakeholders.
Oh, absolutely.
That's great. Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Gera, for that. And then I just had one last thing. Sarah, when you have a chance, could you maybe put together a one-pager for us that we could share online, because people ask us about this program? And I'd love to be able to post on my social media, I'm sure others would too, in advance of that date, how folks could do it. Is that something you could help us with?
Oh, absolutely. We are working with our PIO officer to do just that, and we'll make sure that we send it to all the council offices.
I know you have an extraordinary PIO team. So yes, if you could have one of them send us over a document, that would be great. Thank you. And thanks again, Eric and Steve, for the modification.
Can you attach that to a long report, please? Okay. There's a motion and a second. Let's call the roll, please.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagueta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great start. An important initiative. Thank you all. Very, very good. Thank you, LaChelle and Sarah and your team. Thank you to the members. Is there anything else to come before the Housing Authority? Councilman Chenier? I see your hand raised virtually.
Yeah, sorry. This will be for both Housing Authority and for the city manager. I think this council has done a very thoughtful job in allocating the $89 million, $89.7 million to a very wide variety of causes, all of them worthwhile. My guess is that there will be some organizations or some of the grants that we put out there that will not take hold, and that there will be money left at the end of the day, something that I think we all can agree on, that we don't want to give back to the federal government. So what I would ask between the Housing Authority and the city is to continue reporting back to the council about the usage and to have available, and I know they're doing some of this work already, but I think it's important that we all know, to have available options for any funds that we have remaining to be spent before the end of the year. That's it.
Okay. I think that's important to begin preparing for that very real possibility. Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, there are no comments for matters not on the agenda.
Okay, then if there is nothing else, we will adjourn the meeting, and we will reconvene at 5 o'clock for a meeting of the city council as the city council. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.